Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Welcome to our first meeting of the new year. It is January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public with its hands. One nation under God, indivisible, just for all. The mission of the White Plains Public School is to educate and inspire all students, while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Thank you, President Eller. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. I'd like to ask that you join us in a moment of silent reflection. As we remember, Lula Bryant, teacher helper, pre-kindergarten at Highlands from nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen ninety-two. Manson A. Donahue was principal of Post Road Elementary, Battle Hill Junior High, and White Plains High School from nineteen sixty to nineteen eighty. And he was the co-founder of the Laux Track Me. And Josephine Falcone, who was a board of education member nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty-seven, a member of the White Plains High School Hall of Fame, a graduate of White Plains High School, and a White Plains Common Council member, as well as the mother-in-law of Vice President Charlie Norris. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to public participation, I would like to extend, as Dr. Ricker noted, that Charlie Norris is not with us tonight, and also that Kane Letizia was also unable to make it tonight. Dr. Ricker, for your update, please.
Thanks, President Eller. So just to provide a a brief snapshot of an update related to COVID- nineteen, we've been updating the community regularly. Of course, our reopening committee met last week, and the reopening committee determined that we would employ a test-to-stay program in the White Plains City School District. And following the advice of our district doctor, as well as our health services representatives, we will look to start that following this present surge. So looking at the numbers right now, we anticipate that that's going to be sometime next week. Did have a meeting with the county as we do every Monday this morning. Of course, countywide, as you all know, maybe some of you heard George Latimer's update today, too. We've been seeing really high numbers of COVID- nineteen identified within Westchester County, as we have all throughout the state. Of course, that's not good news. The good news, if there is any associated with that, is that the hospitalization rates have not been keeping pace with those high numbers. So while we do see folks who are hospitalized, and certainly hospitalization has increased with the prevalence of the Omicron variant, we're not seeing such dramatic increases in hospitalization. But that said, anybody who's dealing with COVID- nineteen right now knows that not only is it frustrating, but also it's debilitating. If you have full symptom onset, I know a number of folks who are here with us this evening have either gone through it or presently going through it. So it's a challenge for everyone. In the school district, we continue to see cases, probably, and Jim and I were just talking about this, probably, you know, five, five percent, seven percent, eight percent of students testing. We do have a big increase in folks who are taking advantage of our rapid PCR testing. We are working and going to continue to work with our provider to continue that testing, and that's one of the things that we asked the county today. So we'll have that testing opportunity remains. Then couple that with test-to-stay. We think that that will be helpful. Now, there was some guidance that was released on January fourth last week, and it came from the New York State Department of Health, and unfortunately, it seemed to cause some confusion in the field. Folks, and some of you may have seen the article, I think it ran today, that in Rockland County, they were employing this guidance for schools. That guidance doesn't cover schools, unfortunately. So as the State Education Department and New York State Department of Health told school districts to hold, and that there would be additional guidelines coming out for school districts to follow. Now, just this evening, right around, I don't know, six o'clock or so, we did receive guidance from the New York State Department of Health to school districts and county departments of health that was telling us that guidance will be forthcoming. And essentially, it says this, and this is not operationalized yet, but I do want to share this. Essentially, it is looking to reduce the quarantine and isolation periods for fully vaccinated students and staff members in schools. For the purpose of the guidance, fully vaccinated does not mean boosted. It means the completion of the full course of the first and second inoculation. So that's going to be a bit of a game changer from where we are presently in terms of students who are being caught in contact traces. Now, that doesn't mean that students who are exhibiting signs and symptoms of potential illness are going to have a shorter quarantine period. This is initially for asymptomatic contact trace students in schools. There, again, there's more detail with that. We'll be sharing that with our community once we receive the actual guidelines. We do think that this will be helpful, however, in the quarantine aspect. And a number of parents and guardians have been reaching out with questions related to why is Rockland County employing this and Westchester County isn't? And we know that that's been frustrating and confusing, along with, you know, a number of other aspects that when we don't have sort of continuity or parity with districts, some of you have heard, you know, that the, out on Long Island, that there was from the county executive in Nassau, a proclamation that school districts could make determinations on their own whether or not masks would be worn in their facilities. That was immediately stopped by the state of New York. So, you know, again, when it comes to the guidelines coming from the New York State Department of Health, school districts don't have the ability to pick and choose. They're required to follow the guidance as it is. What we can do and what we have been doing, and I must say, pretty successfully, is working with the state to fix in future iterations of guidelines, initial guidance that actually hurts schools and hurts their ability to operate in person. So we'll continue to do that to make sure that our voices are being heard when the state is promulgating guidelines. But, you know, for anybody who's trying to think about the future, as we are, one of the things that we've been continuously asking the state of New York to provide is, you know, sort of, if you can think about it, an off-ramp. Now, it's hard to think about right now in the middle of January, you know, in the midst of a surge, the holiday surge. But we do know that as time wears on, you know, that this is likely, the present scenario is going to change, and case numbers will come down. We're already seeing them coming down, you know, folks go into quarantine, but many more folks come out of quarantine each day. So, you know, this is a cycle that we're trying to, you know, be a little bit forward-thinking at the state level as well. The state also indicated to us that they will be sending additional rapid tests that will further support the test-to-stay program. Once that program is up and running, we do think that that's going to do a lot to help parents and guardians be able to, you know, count on their children being in person every day, and that's one of our goals as well. Keeping our classrooms and our schools safe has always been our number-one priority. I think that the district has done a great job, not a perfect job, but a great job in being able to minimize potential spread within our facilities. We still are not seeing spread within our facilities. We are identifying cases of COVID- nineteen through our testing program. We're identifying cases of COVID- nineteen, you know, when children present with symptoms. And that's what you would expect and you'd want us to be able to do. So there'll be more to come, as always, but just for everybody on the call this evening, or on the meeting this evening, so that you know there is guidance that just came out tonight, and there'll be more to share this week. Thanks, President Eller.
We're going to move right into public participation. The board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum limit of twenty-five minutes for public comment. Please, if you have questions that are very specific or related directly to your student, please know that the board and the cabinet will be happy to address any matters privately with you.
My name's Alan Weintraub. I live in Old Farm Circle in White Plains, and I'd like to thank Dr. Ricker and the board for allowing me to make this presentation. I hope, I trust that the members of the board have received the written presentation that I sent to Dr. Ricker. Basically, I and several people that I've had discussions with are concerned with the fact that the board has not publicly advocated for full-day pre-K for three- and four-year-olds. I remember listening to the League of Women Voters discussion when there was, last year, when there was an election for board members, and most of the candidates, the incumbents, and one of the candidates simply stated that it's too expensive, and there was no indication of what the cost would be. Since I only have three minutes, I'm just going to go right to my recommendation. I've been working on this with Assemblywoman Poland, who's been looking at, who had hoped that there would be funding from the federal government on the President Biden's legislation, but that doesn't look too fruitful. And to be candid about it, with my discussions with her and other people, it doesn't look like New York State is going to be providing any additional funding for pre-K, three- and four-year-olds. So my recommendation to the board is that the White Plains Board of Education should move to establish a citywide committee with representation from the entire spectrum of the nonprofit, residential, religious, ethnic, and business organizations, and of course, as well as the PTAs of the various schools, to educate the White Plains residents as to the benefits of funding pre-K full-time for all four-year-olds starting in September, two thousand and twenty-two, and eventually, three-year-olds. The citywide committee should focus on advocating, on increasing, obviously, the New York State funding for the entire pre-K school years. And, and I know this is probably very controversial, the White Plains school tax. It's not sufficient, in my opinion, for leadership to state simply that in White Plains the school tax cannot be increased to fund pre-K for four-year-olds. The White Plains Board of Education, I believe, has a responsibility to provide every resident and taxpayer what the school tax increase would be for each taxpayer to fund pre-K for all four-year-olds. For myself, you know, and it's public knowledge, my school tax is around thirteen thousand dollars a year. And I'd be intellectually, as well, curious to understand if the White Plains Board of Education decided to fund full-time pre-K for four-year-olds, what my tax increase would be. And I think a number of residents in the city would also be interested. I think if, my philosophy is, is that if you give people numbers, then they can understand what the benefits are and what the costs are. I guess that's about three minutes. Thank you. And I hope you would, I hope the board will provide this information. I'd be very interested to know what my own increase would be, and I strongly would request that the Board of Education form such a committee and start to educate the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Ricker?
Yeah, thanks, President Eller, and thanks, Mr. Weintraub. I was happy to share your report with the Board of Education. I do want to just make mention, and I know you wouldn't necessarily have known this, but this particular Board of Education has actually been out in the forefront of advocacy for pre-K, not just for children in in White Plains, but for children all throughout the state of New York, because we too believe in the importance of universal pre-K for, as you mentioned, three- and four-year-olds. In White Plains, we actually serve as many children as we possibly can in full-day pre-kindergarten. And I know you had, in your report, mentioned about fifteen million dollars for allocation, you know, based on the per-pupil expenditure for our K through twelve students. And for pre-K, it's actually, the number is right around eight or nine thousand dollars per student. And in fact, we are working right now to actually do an evaluation of our entire pre-K program, because one of the things that we would like to endeavor to do, certainly our vision, is to be able to offer a spot to any child, any three- and four-year-old child in the White Plains City School District who wishes, whose parents are guardians, wish them to be part of a pre-K program. That is actually, you know, a mission that we're working on now. We've expanded our program. We actually have a a very robust pre-K program, and we work with, and I'm sure you know this, we work with actually community partners to provide pre-K. So the school district funds overseas and coordinates curricularly with our providers, and we seek, we are seeking to not only potentially expand that, but also additional ways to entice and bring more children into the program. So I think if you're agreeable, and I think you are, we should probably connect you, me, Dr. Hand, and we can brief you and give you a full update on what the program looks like and where we intend that, you know, to be in the next couple of years. I think we're all on the same page, and I can speak certainly, and they would shut me up if I couldn't, for the board, every one of them, to a person wants every one of our three- and four-year-old children to participate in early childhood education. In fact, the school district actually has a program called the White Plains Basics. And this is a program from zero conception to essentially three-years-old, where we're working with new parents and guardians to provide them with very basic steps that can be taken in the home to further ready children for learning and socialization. So it's a pretty robust approach, and I look forward to talking more about it with you whenever it's convenient.
Fine. That would be, I would very much like to participate with that. I just want to mention to you and the board that my knowledge of this comes from, in our family, we have ten graduates of White Plains High School, and the last two was my middle daughter, whose work was on primary education in developing countries. But more importantly, the last graduate from nineteen ninety-seven, my youngest daughter, was an adjunct professor of education in Colorado State University in Pueblo, and she is a principal out in Colorado, and she's been educating me on the importance of pre-K, three- and four-year-old education. So I look forward for the contacts and to get involved with this. But I, again, my last comment is, when I speak to people, they, I think there's, you would find a great opportunity to move this along at a higher plane than just beyond the parents in the school system.
That's great. Thank you. And it's really great to hear that our tigers are out there in the world making a positive difference, too. So thanks.
I don't see any hands. I would like to put into our agenda just for any comments from the board. I know we'll have our committee comments later. Do we have any more? Do we have any comments from the board at this point?
I'll just briefly mention that I've been participating in the Science Curriculum Committee, working on developing a curriculum resource to align with New York State new science learning standards for elementary school students. So we had our second meeting. I met with the three-through, grades three-through-five group. And the focus of this last meeting was collaboratively creating format and categories for a quality evaluation tool in order to evaluate a core elementary science resource. So that work is ongoing, and I'm looking forward to our January meeting.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the board? Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll move into our superintendent's report.
Thanks, President Eller. I'm going to first welcome, I think, Diago, and hey, Diago, good to see you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, too. Thank you to everybody in here.
Thanks for being with us, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to you, sir.
All right. So I'm here to represent the youth groups in our district, right? So I'm here to give updates about what happened early this December and, you know, throughout this month. So I'm going to start with Church Street School. And fourth and fifth graders made a total of sixteen no-suit blankets, and were donated to the Malvern Animal Shelter. Our school community had a toy drive for the holidays, which benefited other families at Church Street School. Before the holidays, students at Church Street School shared their holiday traditions on a school-wide palette, which is a, I think, like, you could be seen as like a media outlet, not a media outlet. It's a website where you share your opinions and discuss topics. Some classes invited family members to join them on Zoom to share their holiday tradition presentations. We've even had a family member join on Zoom from another part of the world. And Church Street had a winter spirit week, and they turned the auditorium into a winter wonderland. So now I'm going to start with Post Road. In early December, they held a grade-level assembly, a supermodel, a month-long theme, which discussed what it means to be a good friend. And then students participated in an hour of coding every day for a week straight. In mid-December, their PTA sponsored a reindeer run. Our students ran one mile, then they had a hot cocoa, picked up gingerbread houses to build at home, and listened to our chorus sing winter and holiday songs all safely outside, all safely outside. And fifth graders in the band and orchestra performed songs they've been practicing since the start of the school. And the fourth and fifth grade chorus sang winter holiday songs. And their concert was recorded due to COVID- nineteen, but it was also aired live on the PTA's Facebook page. And late December, they had a fun spirit week. In Ridgeway, they had, there's some awesome winter shows outdoors. And they were trying to find ways to include families, so they held them at the bus loop, and parents were able to come and see each grade perform. At MAS, they had Kindness Month in December, and they celebrated kind citizens of the month in each class, who were kind in their words and actions towards students and adults. And we have begun Respect Month in January with the teachers, with the teachers, and creating opportunities during the month for students to be respectful to their classmates, themselves, and our community. And we focus on what it looks like, sounds like, and feels like. We're also enjoying our sermules that were recently completed with messages of encouragement from each class painted on the main stairs for everybody to see. So at Eastview, they had our Eastview School Dance after school in November. It was an outdoor success. And I've been, you know, I'm involved in the GO, and I've been trying to get that on for like years, you know, just this year, but hopefully we can do it in the spring. Students in art have been involved with designing pop art portraits during class using their iPads. So leading up to the holidays, they had, they treated some holiday melodies by a school band who walked walked the hallways and visited classes to play some familiar tunes. And their students on Team Stony Brook held Fibonacci Day, where they solved sequence puzzles, wrote poems, and even moved around for Fibonacci friezens. Soon as on Team Purchase, had a day-long experience where they took virtual tours of colleges, researched the difference between colleges and universities, and sported their favorite college colors or gear. And the student body sponsored a food drive, and the students at Eastview brought in, you know, food to fill four boxes, four big boxes for our neighbors here in White Plains. Items included canned tuna and chicken, box mac and cheese, peanut butter, canned vegetables, and canned soup. We spent some time at meetings discussing how quickly a family can become food insecure, ways that we can help those in need of our community, and the importance of removing the stigma associated with the family's food insecurity. We are fortunate to have partnered with Ridgeway, Alliance Church here in White Plains. Their food pantry is a major source of food in the community, and has been hit hard through the pandemic. And I was really happy to hear back from Director Bachelor, I'm sorry. Director Bachelor from Oshambo. So on Friday, January fourteenth, Oshambo will be celebrating Wellness Day. Various speakers will be speaking to students throughout the course of the day about health and wellness. And the Director's Challenge of the Month of December highlighted academic achievement in the area of science. The following students will have a special lunch on next week for receiving this recognition: Alan Tapia, Kevin Rendon, Damon Moody, Jacob Torado, Naomi Santiago-Garcia, and Richard Ramirez. And so, White Plains High School, we recently had our hockey player, Dan Cardoza, break the high school scoring record. I reached out to Ms. Rosso, and we were able to set up a booster clinic on Wednesday, January twelfth. We have three hundred shots available, which goes back to what Dr. Ricker said in the beginning, how we're keeping our school safe. And, you know, it goes for students ages twelve and up. So if you guys could spread the word, I appreciate that. Successful holiday buzzes are planned by the student government, poetry, a lot of competition, and we had an author visit, who was Jack Gantos. We also had four college signings. Julia Bataglia, Scott Socker Scholarship to American College, Natasha Mendez, softball scholarship to U Albany, Alexa Galagani, softball scholarship to U Central Florida, Lizzie Torado, Dively Scholarship to SUNY Vington. And throughout November, December, six girls qualified for the swimming state championship. One cross-country runner qualified for cross-country state championships. Alexa Reyna brought home two state championships, titles in the two hundred and five hundred yard freestyles. And Alexa also set a new section-one record in the two hundred freestyle, and a new section, and New York State Public High School record in the five hundred free. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Diago. Thanks so much. Lot of really fantastic things happening, and you know, the focus is on service and support, which is tremendous. You know, just always, always so proud of our students for everything that they do. So, great job. Thank you. I do want to just briefly, not that I need to, but remind everyone tomorrow is going to be very, very cold. So, you know, please bear that in mind, and also look out for our neighbors, you know, for folks who who may have difficulty, but just watch out for everybody. And hopefully, I think it's supposed to clear in a couple of days and get back to sort of more seasonal cold temperatures, less frigid temperatures. So this evening, we are going to share with you the long-range plan. And before I pop it up, I just want to preface with a few things. Number one, I say this every year, but it's really important. This is not a budget presentation. This is a three-to-five-year look with aspirations for next year. And in the future, it also continues to stay in line with previous long-range plans. And it's the beginning of the conversation. It's not the end of the conversation. So there are a hundred and one slides. I am not going to read one hundred and one slides to you, because I want you to still somewhat like me after tonight's meeting is over. So I'm going to jog us through. I'm going to stop at areas that I want you to pay special attention to. But this is available for you to peruse at your leisure. And again, we're going to be having conversations about all of these topics that are going to be presented this evening as we get into the actual budget presentation. So again, not a budget presentation, not asking for any action this evening. We are simply showing you where the planning process is at the moment. I also want to thank everybody involved in this process. It is a major undertaking that we do annually, but again, sets us up to be in solid position for planning, not just instructionally and extracurricular activities, but also fiscally. And you'll see that play out as I take you through. It's a lot of work from every member of our team, so very, very appreciative to everybody for not only putting that time and that effort in, but also for the creativity that you'll see played out as well. I do want to just thank my core team as well for all I do want to just thank my my core team as well for all of the efforts and the work in in terms of revising and finalizing. Tonight's presentation, want to thank Debbie and Deb and Scott. And of course, Anne in in the business office for pulling together the numbers. Also want to thank the finance and audit committee. Who's already heard the the presentation and and given it their given it their look as well. So I'm going to share my screen with you now. That's where we are right now is again, long-range plan update this evening. Going to going to run you right through this agenda, going to stop a couple of times. I'm going to bring in Anne to comment on some of the. The financial projections and 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 then again, we'll be breaking out instructional budget. And non-instructional budget as as we move forward into the the winter. As a reminder, the the cycle of planning begins with our strategic plan and ends with our proposed budget each year. But it doesn't stop there because the long-range plan carries us into multiple years. Lots of things always at the at the door that we have to contend with in terms of planning annually. And that's why we we prefer to always sort of be thinking ahead. Of course, we're we're dealing with the things that are happening in the day-to-day, but thinking ahead gets us to a place where we can be effective and efficient. Making sure that we're using our resources appropriately, making changes where we need to to make changes and projecting fiscal health. You know, we're very conservative in terms of in in terms of our fiscal planning and we want to make sure, and this has always been a core goal. Actually, a directive from the Board of Education that we're not experiencing peaks and dalleys. That we are in a sound financial footing that is to the extent possible predictive of where we'll be annually. Now, there are things that we can't control, of course, but there are things that we can't control. The board expects us to be planning to control all of those areas. The long-range plan is at the center of everything that we do and you will see that played out in tonight's presentation as well. The vision, mission, and our core beliefs are always at the center of our long-range plan and all of the planning, as is the. The annual strategic plan. Which incorporates all of our goals into our long-range plan. So in terms of the things that we've or the challenges that we've been contending with, there are many, as we are all very, very well aware. Right now, we're of course dealing with COVID-19 pandemic moving into year two. We also need to keep eyes into the future for potential economic downturn associated with inflation. And you know, any number of of challenges that will come out of the steps that we're taking right now. To try and stabilize the nation as we're dealing with the pandemic. And do you want to just touch base on this? This is an important slide and I want to make sure that everybody understands it.
Thanks, Dr. Rick. Good evening, everybody. This is demonstrating the funds that the Board of Education has returned to the taxpayer. To make sure that we weren't taxing for things and that we could fund them with savings and our fund balance reserve. So we fund capital projects and therefore we're not issuing debt payments, you know, principal and interest serial bonds. We are self-funded for our tax sorcery settlements with commercial entities who are claiming refunds on the value of their property taxes. We in twenty-one, twenty-two reduced our tax levy by nine and a half million dollars. So continually trying to take monies and make sure that we're returning them to the taxpayer. And you know, minimizing that annual budget each year and not letting it be impacted by one-time-only items. So over the past five years, seventy-eight million dollars return. Or almost a thirty-nine percent in what could have been a potential tax rate increase over those years.
Always looking to do better, always looking to improve our programming. And that has continued to the credit of all of our team members, even even during the pandemic. You can see the reviews that we have in process right now for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, as well as next steps for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Which will include inclusive practices and response to intervention. The guiding principles in our long-range plan is to protect the instructional core, make sure that our kids have access to the classes, the courses. And the opportunities that they need to be successful. And and that is something that we are are committed to one hundred percent. If we need to make adjustments, we want to first do everything we can to delay program impact. And if anything, restructure, not eliminate. So when we look at our financial landscape, we have to take into some assumptions, of course, with regards to revenue. There are key factors that we take into consideration. Anne, you want to jump right in here?
Sure. So we know the tax levy cap is a complex calculation. And these are some of the components that are involved with that calculation. So the tax-based growth factor is actually represents the physical property that's added to our property tax rolls each year. And that comes from New York State. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, it's projected that it would be one point zero zero eight seven percent. For the out years, we're just projecting that it would be flat. Allowable growth factor, this is what you always hear about, is that the tax cap is two percent. But it's it's actually this one component is the lesser of CPI or two percent. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, CPI was only one point two three percent. So that was the factor that was used. For twenty-two, twenty-three, it is looking as though the change for CPI from December twenty to December twenty-one. Is going to be more upwards of four point six seven percent or higher once we get to December numbers. So therefore, this will be limited to two percent. We cannot, you know, factor in a levy increase higher than that. And then we've used two percent as the assumption in the out years, given the fact that we think we're going into a period of inflation. Payment in lieu of property taxes or pilots. Those are agreements that Westchester County Industrial Development Agency makes with. Property owners, commercial property owners for renovations or improvements to their properties to entice them to come into the city. Once an agreement is made, the property assessment for that property owner is pulled from the tax rolls. And then a check is received by the district based on that agreement directly from the city of White Plains. And so that's expected to remain relatively flat. There's properties that go off. Being on pilots and go back on the tax rolls. And then those properties each year, there are properties that come off and go on to direct payment to pilots. And then there's the capital exclusion, which is a separate levy that's in addition to the operating levy. And that's really based on the amount of our debt service principal and interest for capital construction. Less state building aid and less the fact that the board has committed to funding two point one million dollars. In debt service reserve to reduce that levy each year. And that remains relatively flat.
Do you want to draw attention to the service reserve funds that may be reduced?
Yes, the the two point one million that is already committed by the board through twenty-five, twenty-six. That is reducing the the exclusion each year. So those are monies being returned to the taxpayer. And then depending on the master plan and and the work that we're doing with the master plan infrastructure. We are committing the fact that we are recommending a one one-time-only to help fund that plan. In order to help maintain tax to for that plan to be tax-neutral to the taxpayers. And we'll talk about that, you know, in one of the later slides.
Thanks, Dr. Fisher. Well, you're still on.
So I'm going to, so this is the complex calculation, what what everybody dubs, you know, a tax levy cap of two percent. When it when it truly is not. So I draw your attention to the golden rod column for twenty-two, twenty-three. And if you really look at the one, two, three, fourth lineup from the bottom. At the two hundred and two million, two hundred and two point eight million, which already has two point one. Reduction for the use of our debt service reserve to reduce the cap levy exclusion. That technically would be our maximum allowable tax levy. So the two point four million less the two point one. And then based on the fact that we're getting on earlier slide, you saw that the state has committed to fully funding foundation aid. And for White Plains City School District, that means fourteen point one million over the next three years. So if that commitment is sustained by the final state budget that comes out next week. The executive budget and then eventually in April, the adopted budget. The district is in good standing and therefore it could feasibly further reduce the levy to as much as zero percent. And then I think on the next slide. You know, this really kind of breaks it down. So the maximum levy that we could go out and assess based on this formula is three point nine percent. We've already factored in the two point one million that reduces the tax levy because we're using debt service reserve funds to two point eight three percent. And then again, depending on that state final adopted budget. You know, you know, and pending on the budget projections that we're getting into now and what is finally in the adopted budget. As well as twenty-one, twenty-two fund balance projections. That will determine whether we can move that that number down close to zero.
Thanks, Anne. The governor has again sort of doubled down and recommitted to the fully funding of foundation aid. Last week again, so the anticipation is that the the what was written into the law will remain. We had we had some concerns about that last year, but it seems as though this is something that the state has been committed to. And that's good news. It's it's good news for the White Plains City School District. It's good news for the the White Plains community. And it's good news for, you know, all of all of New York's children. So more to come on that. But again, this, as you'll know, note, going through the long-range plan, there's a lot in here. And everything that's in this long-range plan is assuming all of the the financials that Anne just went through. And keeping us again at a very, very conservative budget prediction. So more to come, but but this is great news and everything that our children presently enjoy plus would be supported. Moving forward. But again, this is not a budget presentation, just kind of giving you our our working assumptions. So other revenue assumptions always within, you know, you're talking about everything related to expense-driven state aid, our local resources. But it's, I think, important to note that there will also be additional revenues in in subsequent years that will will be contending with. Demographic data, very interesting dataset this year coming out of our demography report. And really has a lot of things at play. Number one, live births are really, really down everywhere. There was some, you know, in the news as of late, a lot of discussion about birth in general. And you know, fewer people are having children and we have seen that in White Plains as well. We've also seen in White Plains and the state of New York, folks leaving the state and in in some cases, the country. We think that there, you know, obviously, or not obviously, but likely connections to COVID-19. And so we are looking right now, you know, ten years out at a pretty significant decrease. Again, you know, seven, seven thousand one hundred ninety-eight to six thousand three hundred. You know, it's not, it's not as if we're dropping off a cliff, but it is definitely different than what we had seen for projections in previous years. That's something we're going to have to keep a close eye on. It could change, of course, you know, in subsequent out years. But right now, we we always like to make sure that we're giving you those projections as we have them. Our expenditure assumptions, pretty straightforward and broken things out for you to be able to peruse. You know, everything from employee benefits to our tax certs, debt service, and our contractual expenses. Now, we we know that we're going to see big increases in energy. We also know that there is going to be increases in insurance and and as well as other contractual expenses. And and these are all worked in to to our figures as well. Anne, was there anything that you wanted to touch on here or no?
No, I think I think you you hit it all the key points there. And we talked about the tax cert reserve fund and legal counsel providing the board an update for that as well.
Okay, great. In terms of our our financial forecast here, and this is the the long-range plan summary, if you will. Again, very straightforward, kind of right back to what Anne was talking about a couple of slides ago. But you can see, and I just, I I asked her last time when we were in committee, just to talk to the deficiency of one point eight million.
You know, look, it all builds off the subsequent years. You know, we took a very conservative view of the revenues. The revenues really reflect the assumptions for the tax levy and the assumption for, you know, having full foundation aid. But everything else remaining pretty consistent. Our expenditures reflect those assumptions on the previous slide for salaries and benefits and contractual increases. And then we've also included, you know, what the long-range instructional plan and operational plan. And what those things that we want to evaluate and look at. And then for twenty-one, twenty-two, you know, are there funds available to fund some of those one-time-only items? That do not need to be baked into the annual budget. This is based on those assumptions. We know each year, once the budget is set, there's always going to be. You know, additional revenues or or savings in any given year. So this is just our broad brush, you know, once we get to twenty-five, twenty-six. You know, this landscape will keep being, will change and every year we update that long-range plan. So this is just to give you a sense, are things sustainable? And if and if we want something, then we need to go and find those efficiencies to make sure that we can provide those programs.
Thanks, Anne. Okay, so now I'm going to kind of, again, jog us through just a little bit. I'm not going to read it. I promise the next seventy slides I won't read to you. Pre-kindergarten, as I mentioned, fully committed to pre-K. In the White Plains City School District and and offering this opportunity to as many children as possible. We'd like to aspirationally get to a place where it's it's every three and four-year-old. Certainly space and and community partners, these are all considerations. Right now, we're looking at an instructional coach and we're going to use grant funding to be able to do that. That will better coordinate or continue to coordinate with pre-K into the K-12 system. Instructional technology, always exciting. We are moving to continue to outfit our classrooms and our library and media centers. With the latest and most user-friendly applications and and hardware for our students. And I I just, again, I always do this and, you know, I I have to tip my hat to the board as well as our team members. Because of our planning and because of the movement that we had made made in terms of instructional technology. And certainly Ron Velez and his team, you know, tip of the hat to them. We were in a position to be able to get to, you know, bridging the gap, if you will, when the pandemic broke. For every one of our kids to have access to technology as well as access to internet if needed. Enrichment, we're continuing to offer enrichment to our children and looking for ways to expand those opportunities in the district. Anywhere that we possibly can. In terms of literacy, ongoing professional development and opportunities to increase our students' access. And and improve student outcomes related to literacy, lots of things happening there. And I'll come back to literacy later on in the presentation as well. Mathematics, expanding our content knowledge and professional learning opportunities in K-five. Enhancing the math program with the second math specialist, K-two and three-five. Maximizing our in-class, I'm sorry, our ICS support to include push-in. All of these things, again, focusing on providing our students with individualized mathematics instruction. And our faculty and staff members with the supports that they need to move our kids forward. And science, phasing in over a three-year period or K-five science resources. And again, tip of the hat to to Dr. Hand, the curriculum committee and everybody who's working really hard. To integrate the the next-generation science standards and all of the opportunities for hands-on science opportunities for our kids. And and I do have to say, one of the things that I'm very proud of is science and social studies continue to and and will continue to remain a focal point. You know, sometimes school districts are focusing on English language arts and mathematics as primary as primary sort of targets. And science and social studies taking a backseat a little bit and we're not, you know, we're not doing that in White Plains. So we're we're going to continue to build out our science program and opportunities for our kids. Dual language, we are, we are proposing, we will be proposing coaching to support the program. And in in our three buildings, dual language, as you can imagine, is is extraordinarily challenging. For our faculty and staff members to make sure that we're getting that fifty-fifty model. And so that's, you know, it's twice the planning in some instances, assessments and and training. And we want to continue to support that program in line with the outcomes that we we saw from the the. The study that we did with Cal just a few years ago. Center for Applied Linguistics, I'm sorry. In Special Education Services, the integrated co-teach model is expanding, which is fantastic. And we want to support that moving forward. We're moving into middle school, again, math instruction, you can you can move into this on your own. Looking to expand and continue to support math instruction at the middle school level as well as English language arts. Uh looking to expand and continue to support math instruction at the middle school level as well as English language art. Uh moving to a workshop model for reading and writing, increasing classroom libraries. Uh for V R E, we're looking to add a point to our teacher um as well as a expanding the uh the sections for uh new digital media, which is very, very exciting for us. At Highlands, uh social and emotional learning, as it is all throughout the district, are very, very important and and continuing to increase those opportunities for our our Tigers at Highlands for grade seven and eight. Um science and mathematics, much the same. Digital textbooks for earth science and continuing to offer double accelerated math uh as well. For E L A and social studies, again, here, we're implementing the the review of our of our cycle and and creating those real life learning opportunities for our kiddos. Um wanna just again thank Dr. Hand and and the team for constantly looking for ways um to improve and expand while at the same time uh trying to utilize the resources that we have in place. And you can see, you know, in many of these slides, no increase or using existing budgetary resources to be able to support these initiatives. Oops, sorry. Um academic support and learning, uh looking in terms of accelerating learning for for after-school programming as well, and this is very exciting. A transition program for students who will be transitioning from middle school to high school. I I oftentimes connect this to, you know, sometimes when you go to to undergrad, uh the the freshman studies program, which is actually supporting students and getting them ready, pairing them with with a a a already a high school student that's already there, sort of like a mentoring type of a a scenario. Um allowing, again, for smooth transition as kids matriculate out of um middle school and into high school. People services support, again, in line with our long range plan from the past, you're gonna continue to see the um the introduction of additional helping personnel. This is something that we're gonna keep doing from years to come. We know that the challenges that uh we're we're experiencing dur- during the pandemic are gonna have lingering effects on our students. Heck, they have lingering effects on adults. We have to make sure that we're supporting our kids um that we have the helping professionals in place, and that's something we've been very proud of in the past. And we're gonna continue to be very proud of it in the future because we are allocating those resources to those positions. Again, special education supports, providing the instructional coaching um that's gonna be needed to uh expand and enhance those programs. At the high school, lots of exciting things on on the table and and again, constantly focusing on ways to connect our kids with each other as well as our faculty and staff members. The high school team is looking at potentially uh reimagining, if you will, the house structure and incorporating a new house. Uh again, bringing down, pardon me, our learning committee uh communities to smaller learning communities where students will have that 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 personalized interaction uh in their houses and increasing um con- uh contact with counselors uh and decreasing uh a feeling, if if a feeling exists of of disconnection. Uh additional steam opportunities as well as um as arts opportunities. I I love these uh expansions in our um electives courses for our kids and the reintroduction of the today's students, tomorrow's teachers program, which is a a program that we used to have in in White Plains and we're excited to be reintroducing it. This is a program that will help to cultivate a pipeline of teachers, right, uh new teachers, right in the White Plains City School District. And the hope here is that young people who are interested in potentially becoming teachers, um you know, participate in this program and go off to college, get certified, and then come right back to the White Plains City School District um to to now again become teachers uh where once they were students. Additional community partnerships, the high school is working on just a few uh as as mentioned here. Um we are excited about opportunities, every opportunity we can uh muster to support student achievement. So whether it be um in new courses like intermediate music technology, um offering a permanent math lab, which we know is supportive for algebra and geometry. Um all of these things are are going to only enhance our students' experiences at the high school level. Things like, and I, I, you know, just to pick off the the last one on the list here, the A P summer boot camp, right, offering um kids the opportunity during the summer um to get a leg up, if you will, for those A P courses that they're gonna be taking. And I had mentioned the freshman seminar, um again, you know, providing that that segue uh into the high school learning community and really helping our kids um matriculate in as freshmen. It's a big, it's a big adjustment in some cases, certainly. Um you know, uh coming out of the pandemic, it was, but even before the pandemic, we know for many of our students um that transition can be a challenging one, so we're excited to offer. Uh and and again, uh thanks to Principal Martinez and the team at the high school uh for for all of the this creative thinking of ways that we can continue to support our Tigers. Uh Rochambeau, which is of course connected directly with the high school. Looking to, again, expand, potentially expand science offerings, chemistry and physics, bilingual education. Um we're expanding on the multimedia lab, which has been a great success, uh as well as potentially graphic arts. American Sign Language has been a fantastic course at at White Plains High School. We want to uh to see that introduced at Rochambeau as well. As uh lecture, uh electives and internships expanding. Uh again, looking for opportunities to connect in the real world uh with businesses to allow our students more expanded opportunities uh to have internships and externships. When we move to operations now, uh thinking about athletics. Lots to be proud of. Those pictures, by the way, are pre-pandemic. That's why nobody's wearing masks. Um the athletics department is is an amazing department and extraordinary numbers of of student participation and athletic contests, over a thousand contests annually. Um you know, so it's it's a big operation in terms of athletics. Uh athletics is proposing uh athletic trainer as well as a part-time strength and speed coach. We're looking at at new teams uh for the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four years. So boys modify basketball and girls modify volleyball as well as uniforms and the like. And a J V cheer team in twenty-three, twenty-four and and all the uh accoutrement that go with that as well. Summer Sports Academy, new program open to all White Plains uh high school students. But uh there will also be uh the the particular focus on our student athletes participating in S A T and A C T prep as well as uh the uh strength training and and all of the the training that goes with the athletic side. Want to make sure that we're focusing both on academics and athletics. We've got a great track record of that uh as evidenced each semester when we recognize our scholar athletes. Moving into facilities and operations, I I know Mr. Stephen Ellie's here with us, Frank, and his team does an amazing, this is a an enormous operation, as you all know. Uh just look at the number of work requests that get put in each year. Uh Facilities and Operations is doing a great job um and continuing to look for ways to do, to do even more. So capital projects in nineteen twenty underway, uh twenty twenty-one underway. Uh lots there to be proud of and lots always happening. I, again, I brought this up during our committee meeting. When the shutdown hit in March of twenty twenty, the facilities in White Plains didn't close. We kept working. Um and so our projects kept moving forward, which really was was beneficial to the district. Um you know, again, taking advantage of that time to get work done, um also not slowing down our projects uh to the extent possible, even during the pandemic. Maintenance projects always taking place all throughout the school district. Oh, sorry. Um in terms of priority goals for twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty-five, twenty-six, and you can see them here. Um includes master plan, uh includes our our facilities and custodial assessment. We're reviewing our entire operations at R F Ps out. Um ventilation improvements, and that's all part of the H B A C uh as well as air conditioning, all the 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 projects that we've been talking about, our green initiatives, including solar and lighting um as well as the maintenance projects that had already been approved. Playground, Eastview. Um our long range plan really captures everything from the master plan to replacing cameras all throughout the district in increasing our per- our our ability uh with with personnel. Anne, did you want to just touch on this uh slide real quick?
Yeah, and and this is where um Mr. Stephen Ellie is really uh laying out what those uh costs on those previous slides represent. And you see the electric costs that we talked about, you know, New York Power Authority has said that they're, you know, going to uh be increasing us significantly for twenty-two, twenty-three. But then all those other things um as far as to continue to maintain our um equipment. Um and then out in twenty-five, twenty-six, depending on the master plan, the cost that would be involved with operating that. So that that just really details it out. And then on the next slide, it's, you know, what that staffing need is in order to accomplish this work, work internally. And that has all been factored into the long range plan. And then on the next slide are some additional one-time-only projects. Um the Middle's Eastview Middle School track replacement that, you know, based on our early projections for twenty-one, twenty-two, that we think that we can um you know, move ahead and do some of these projects, the Ridgeway Elementary hallway floor replacement building-wide. And then M A S replacement of the lockers. Um and then we're also looking to do standardization. You'll see that on another slide of furniture throughout the district and to to allocate funds for each of the buildings for for this year in order to accomplish some of the needs that are there for furniture.
Thanks, Anne. Master planning, um this is, this has been a labor of love. It's uh it's been ongoing for years, got got stymied a little bit by COVID nineteen, but we kept pressing and kept pushing and the Board of Education kept working and and so ultimately, we're going to be uh coming um this month to the Board of Education with the initial uh recommendations for their review for the master plan, and that's very exciting. Um there will be a great deal discussed and ultimately, it will uh it will be, the decision will be made um how we're gonna move forward here. But you know, what what is the the highlight of all of this planning? Um is that right now, uh and it's too comprehensive for me to go into right now and there'll be a time for that, but the master plan uh as as it's being laid out right now is is being projected to be tax neutral to the taxpayer. So again, no increase in taxes for taxpayers. So now we have, um again, you know, at very, very early stages for uh twenty-two, twenty-three, potentially uh uh zero, no increase in taxes to taxpayer, and we even have potentially for a master plan, a tax-neutral plan. Uh more to come on that, but this is exciting. And this, and this is a credit to the Board of Education. It's a credit to um years and years of fiscal responsibility as well as careful planning over the last six, seven years in terms of um getting us to a place. And and I should also say advocacy. Uh you know, advocating constantly for the White Plains uh and and its share of state support. Um all of these things coming together, it's uh it's very exciting. So uh more to come, but you're looking at, you know, from the ventilation filtration, air conditioning, zero cost, no increase. Um renovations for um the potential master plan, tax-neutral and establishment of of a new capital reserve, which of course reduces taxpayer burden over time, allows the district more flexibility to be able to attend to facility and capital needs without um borrowing and uh and increasing costs that way. Safety and security, uh what a, what a boon. Uh our our safety and security program uh is is very, very different um than it's ever been, and we're we're extraordinarily proud of our team. Um or uh and and all the work that we've done uh to get us to where we are today. Again, always improving, nothing's perfect. Uh but we are really proud of where we where we've been in terms of training, professionalization of our team members as well as working with our liaison to make sure that our district is as secure and safe as it possibly can be. In terms of information technology, again, this is information that you all are very well aware of. iPads over seven thousand out to our our students. And when we talk about the I P A funding, this is um this, and Anne, do you want to just, I I think this is important so that folks understand um how we've been able to accomplish this using I P As.
So installment purchase agreements that are offered by Bozies and and approved by New York State really allows us to maximize our purchasing power. Um so we're able to put together, you know, three-year leases um afford this equipment, but we're able to buy, you know, whether it's seven hundred and fifty thousand or seven eighty-seven from previous I P As, and now we're looking to actually pay off with some one-time-only funds for this year, previous I P As, so that we can really start to move towards the one point seven million, um given now that we have um all this equipment out now to every single uh student. Um you know, it it becomes necessary for us to have that level to continue to maintain and refresh, but it really leverages our buying power.
And we started that just about three years ago, right?
Uh, I want to say seventeen, eighteen.
Is that long already? Oh my god.
I think, yeah, five years ago.
Okay.
We're on I P A number six.
I P A number six.
Six for next year, yeah.
Um computers in art classrooms. So again, you know, did digitization uh as part of, not all of, but part of our students' experiences everywhere, and this is something um you know, that we all understand uh is very much part of the landscape for all of our learners in two thousand twenty-two. Um we're moving away from the old smart boards that we have been moving away. The Ben Q interactive TVs are cheaper and easier to use and um from everything that I've been told, uh they they are very welcome in the classroom so far. So we'll be continuing to deploy them throughout the district. Extending Wi-Fi uh to outdoor learning spaces. We even have uh really sort of aspirations to go further than our outdoor learning spaces, and it would be nice um to potentially even be a wired or Wi-Fi um community. So there's gonna be more coming on that, but we are looking at ways that we can continue to expand access for all of our families. Um and even, you know, as late as or as, yeah, late as last week, we sent out, uh Mr. Velez sent out a new opportunities for families to to access Wi-Fi at home at reduced costs. And I think that that will be continuing um you know, into the future. Uh Wi-Fi access, access to the internet is becoming more, much more and more and more like a utility in today's day and age. Um switching over our uh voice-over I P phone systems and security. Um again, you know, being able to to in- interact with our security systems from any device at remotely at any time has been extraordinarily advantageous to us. Also being able to loop in um our Department of Public Safety where needed, um universal student I D cards integrating with food services and transportation. Um it it's uh more and more um becoming um uh going to be sort of a one, a one swipe world, right? So we're uh we're continuing to expand that in our district as well. Um indoor Wi-Fi access points, network switches. Our website is going, uh undergoing a complete and total um o- overhaul. We want our website, our masthead to be best-in-class. Um one of a kind, uh easy to navigate. Anything you need, type it in, search it, comes right up. No more hunting. Uh you know, our website's not terrible right now in terms of the number of clicks it should take you to get somewhere, but we want to make it even better, and that's happening right now, hopefully with a a launch um in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three academic year. People transportation, uh we have done a lot and uh we're continuing to improve our transportation uh for for our students um and our families uh dealing with uh anything from safety concerns to capacity issues, also serving uh uh students who attend out of district placements. Um there are a lot of challenges uh in terms of transportation in the world right now, many of which you've seen uh school districts not having access to transportation, um providers not having drivers. Uh we've been very fortunate in continuing our partnership with National Express, and they have been very, very responsive uh to our needs over over the uh the last several years as well. Um we are, our present agreement's expiring and we're gonna be uh um looking to uh make recommendations with regard uh to our provider and um and our transportation moving forward into next year and beyond. Lots of great work here in procurement. Um it, we are streamlining, finding efficiencies and digi- and automation wherever we possibly can uh to be able to make sure that our services, or rather, our records are being kept digitally, that the access is easy and that they, and that it will be here in compliance um in in the future as well. Uh health services, uh I can, I I I have to just say, um I think Health services, I can, I I have to just say, I think our health services are second to none. Folks have been doing a tremendous job for us, and in terms of moving forward, we want to continue to collaborate with neighborhood partners to, you know, district community partners to be able to provide services and supports to our families as well this year and into the future. Our food nutrition program has been exploding, expanding. The fact that our kids are able to all-access free food when they're in school has been a blessing to our children, and we're advocating that that should be, that should be normal, that should be forever. Kids, when they come to school in White Plains and anywhere else in the United States of America, should be able to eat, shouldn't have to worry about what their socioeconomic statuses are. The adults can can deal with that later on, but every kid should be able to eat in school. Taking advantage of breakfast grab-and-goes, as well as lunch participation has increased dramatically. I do want to thank Dawn McGinn, as well as everybody in our food services, for the tremendous job that they've been doing in our kitchens, and and again, bringing kids the food that they want to eat for, in a way that they want to access it as well. We've gone through staffing about, did you want to just touch on this real quick, Ann?
Sure. So, you know, we had a full program assessment a year or so ago, so our focus has been in really addressing those areas. So, Dawn and her team are doing a staffing evaluation. You know, so just switch to the next, they're evaluating full-time, part-time, and all of that. They really worked hard on the summer program. You can go to the next slide, in really trying to expand our community partnerships and really being able to provide food throughout the city. And so, they they served over a hundred thousand meals this past summer, and we hope to do even greater the following summer.
Thanks, Ann. So, oh, good, good.
Well, I was just going to say, as part of that assessment, really looking at bringing in a contracted chef consultant to really take a look at our culinary program, looking at our menus, doing a staffing review as far as, you know, the real, you know, the folks who are cooking, and how the food is being prepared, our procurement, and you know, supply chain issues that we've, you know, all been suffering through, and and our food service program has been doing a yeoman's job to deal with that every single day. So, you know, as part of that assessment, we're looking to bring someone in to really, you know, finish up and do this kind of evaluation, and then, you know, on the next slide, you know, looking to do the same with it with a dietitian, to really take a look at those areas and and really provide a support on how to make those changes. Menu evaluation, modifications for allergies for students, and so forth.
And dietary restrictions, and this has been something that, you know, we're very proud of in in listening and being responsive to our community. You know, students come to us, and they have dietary restrictions, and, you know, what can we do within our program to to make sure that there's food available for every child, food that they can eat for every child? So, you know, a lot of, a lot of students, a lot of different needs, and kudos to to our, all of our food service professionals for working so hard to meet the needs of our kiddos. So, listen to this, slide one hundred. And, you know, again, I I know that I jogged you through this. As I mentioned, please take the time to review these slides. It's going to be broken out again when we come back to you and start presenting actual budget presentations. So, you can see the the budget development next steps right here. And so, next time we come back will be instructional budget presentation to the Board of Education on February fifteenth, and we have a non-instructional followed shortly thereafter on the twenty-eighth, and before you know it, it's going to be March, and we will be talking about preliminary budget. But, so the news from this evening, the takeaways from this evening, and I hope you're you're really as proud of this as as we are. The district has has been able to really maintain very solid fiscal footing while, at the same time, maintaining its progressive approach to instruction and programming, responsive to our children's needs, responsive to our community input and feedback. That is something that is always very, very important to this Board of Education. Hey, Joe, are you listening to what the community's telling you? And yes, that that's something that we continue to do, and we're really proud of. So, whether it be from, you know, our October budget planning sessions where we get feedback from community members, parents, guardians, students, or whether it be from any given day where we we get an email from a a parent, I had one over the weekend, you know, from a dad who was really interested in master planning, we want to make sure that we're incorporating that into our planning moving forward. And again, having a multi-year plan, as as much as it may change from year to year, right? No one can predict a pandemic, but having that plan in place as a scaffold from which to build each year has really put us in a position that, in some ways, I think is is enviable. And so, even even with all of those potential improvements, again, not a budget presentation, but not looking at, you know, dramatic increases at all in terms of what we're predicting. So, thank you very, very much for allowing me to present that this this evening, and again, huge thanks to everybody who put together all the work behind the culmination of of the long-range plan this year. Thanks, President Eller.
So, next, we're going to move into, sorry, we're going to move into our summary of action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Rick.
Back. Would like to draw everyone's attention to item B for donations and express our gratitude for the three thousand dollars from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools for outdoor tables and benches at White Plains High School. It's fantastic. Thank you so much. And a thousand dollars from Dr. Terry Thomas-Clen for the Dorothy H. Thomas Memorial Scholarship as well. Thank you very much for both of those generous donations.
Thank you. We are so fortunate, you know, to just to be in White Plains where we have such support from our community. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we're going to move into our individual action items. The first one is the recommended approval of the end date for the leave of absence and temporary appointment of interim principal at Highlands, Mike Eaton, as well as for Tara Daly, with social studies teacher. This is effective January tenth, twenty-twenty-two. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do you want to say anything, Dr. Rick, or?
Thank you very much. Briefly, yes, it's it's great to have Mr. Spataford back with us. We we welcomed him back last week, and he is doing great, and and also want to just, again, thank Mr. Eaton and Ms. Daly and everybody at Highlands for pulling together and supporting the entire school community as Mr. Spataford worked through that challenge.
Thank you, thank you, and certainly the board does echo that comment with our thanks for everyone there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of the tentative revised appointment and compensation for learning wash programs as per approval of the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our last individual action item is the recommended approval of the side letter of agreement with White Plains Substitute Teachers Association for a temporary rate increase for per diem substitute teachers from one-twenty-seven a day to a hundred and forty-five dollars per day, effective January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. So important with all of the shortages, and we wanted to make sure that we have students to keep the continuum of learning going for our students. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, we'll move into board discussions. We can start with finance. Dr. Stein?
Finance, Matt, and we discussed basically the long-range plan, which was presented today. Safety Committee is going to be meeting tomorrow, and the Master Planning Committee will be meeting next week. HR met this week as well, but we can't talk about that.
Right, and I was at those meetings. Do we have any more committee reports? I know you did on one show. Are there any other committee reports?
I do have curriculum and instruction as well, and I I do want to preface this and in and special education. You know, the word that kept coming to mind as I'm, as I went through the hundred and one slides, you know, now for like the third time, and it the scope is just, I I I breathtaking kept coming into my mind. I mean, just the scope, the expanse, the depth of, you know, sort of programming facilities, the work that has gone into this, you know, during a pandemic, it would be very easy to become paralyzed, to sort of wallow in the status quo, and I just feel like our administration, our entire staff have gone so above and beyond. They are looking so into the future to determine what our kids, what our community really, really needs. It's just, it it's really impressive. The creativity and the work that's gone into this is is breathtaking. So, I, you know, this this is a world-class school district, and we really, really should be proud of, you know, what we have and where we want to be. So, thank you. Curriculum and instruction. So, Rocco Verulo, the coordinator for instructional technology, and Emily Martinez, the high school principal, came and spoke about a new course, which, you know, if you looked carefully at the slides, you might have seen this, incubator EDU, which is an entrepreneurship program, and the committee had heard about this previously, as had the board, but now it's really fleshed out and is going to come to be. So, it's an authentic entrepreneurship course and experience, and really expands now into the business area, the kinds of experiences we've been trying to, you know, provide for our students, like, you know, scientific research, and, you know, the seal of, you know, civic readiness and project lead the way, and just looking for different ways to provide authentic experiences for our students. This is to help them build a business, develop a a new product or a service startup. It's kind of like a Shark Tank experience. It's just really, really exciting. So, we had a presentation on that, and we also talked about the the long-range plan. So, we're really, really excited.
Thank you.
And then I'll mention special education because I think I was the only, I think I was the board member who was at that committee meeting. So, Carrie Levine, the instructional coach for special education K through five, came and presented on the science of reading, which again is part of the long-range plan as well. It focused on special education, but in fact, this is, this pertains really to the entire school district, and while access is always a priority for special education, we're now also putting a real focus on instruction and looking at the the why behind, you know, how how we teach reading and how student brains work. We've identified a professional development resource, and again, this is all part of long-range planning as well.
Thank you. Lastly, under board discussion, our next finance committee meeting will be on January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Food services, as well as transportation and other topics will be discussed at that time, and we will report out accordingly. And now, without further ado, just to thank everyone for attending our meeting tonight. This is our first one for twenty-twenty-two, and certainly, we're all, you know, we're going to look for a a better twenty-twenty-two for this time than than last year, and just wish everyone a peaceful and joyful year. Take some time to get some rest, and really thank you for all you do for our kids. It's it's deeply and most humbly appreciated. Without ado, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone, for attending. Be safe, and we'll see you all next time.